The first item on the agenda is a statement, a proposed statement, about George Floyd's death and the impact it has had on the country and our communities. And I hope, I should be blamed for it. I drafted it and Aaron Armstrong suggested edits. And it's definitely a proposal. And so I'd like to discuss it. And I'd like to keep in mind, of course, that it may be a little bit unwieldy to edit it greatly here, but if we could have a sort of directional discussion about it, I think that would be great. And I will read it for the benefit of those listening. So this is a proposal. It hasn't been approved by the board yet. "The BART Police Department Citizen Review Board denounces in the strongest possible terms the needless and tragic murder of George Floyd and hereby affirms that his life and all black lives matter. Mr. Floyd's death has understandably deepened public distrust in law enforcement around the country, including in the communities that our members represent. The BART Police Department Citizen Review Board was created after the death of Mr. Grant as part of a system of civilian oversight that quote 'promotes integrity and encourages systemic change and improvement in the police services that BART provides the public.' Although the BART Police Department has made many significant reforms since Mr. Grant's death, we have the duty to continue to advocate for greater change and improvement. We hear the call from our communities for dramatic changes to policing and we as a board commit to explore and advocate for structural changes to the way public safety is guaranteed throughout the BART system. We welcome and encourage public participation and input as well as collaboration with other stakeholders at BART in this process. We reaffirm our commitment in memory of Mr. Floyd and Mr. Grant." Does anybody want to speak on it?
Mr. Chair, this is Aaron Armstrong, Vice Chair, Member-at-Large for the CRB. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide my input on this document, which I believe is a potentially very powerful statement from the CRB that draws a very clear through line from the event that spurred our formation to the moment that we find ourselves in today. So I do hope that we're able to pass this unanimously as a board today.
I would like to make a motion that, this is Les Mensinger, District 6, I would like to make a motion that we accept this letter and approve it.
Darren White, I'd like to second that.
Very good, Mr. Chair. If we're going to have some discussion, this is Zach Bruno. And just a couple of ideas for amendments before we take a full vote.
Sure.
Thank you. And yeah, I do look forward to voting affirmatively ultimately this afternoon. I think it's altogether right and appropriate that this body take this, take this action. However, I do wonder about a couple of items. Number one, we used the term murder, although we may agree that it appears to be a murderous act that caused the death of Mr. Floyd. We do also know that the charges are currently pending and there has not been a trial or a conviction. So we do certainly want to express that it wasn't just a death. So perhaps the term killing might be more prudent. And maybe we could discuss that. And then I had one other idea as well.
Sure. I understand your concerns about the word murder. It has been charged as a murder. I think we've all seen most of the evidence. I feel comfortable with murder. I think killing is also accurate. What do other people think?
This is Darren White. Murder, I feel, is the right and prudent words. I do believe he's charged with, I believe, second degree murder. So I would greatly hope that we can keep that in.
Ken Liu, District 1. So I'm not an attorney here, but when we use the term murder in a letter like this, my question would be, first of all, I know we are going to pass a letter today. My question is, when we use the word murder versus the word killing, can we convey the same thing without taking the legal stance? Because when we use the word murder, it sounds like we've already convicted him prior to standing trial.
Can, this is Representative Grommaz. Can I speak real quick?
Yeah.
So I want us to keep the word murder. I believe, first of all, we are not a court of law. We are not going to prosecute him. That is not our responsibility. I believe that keeping the word murder in itself is a statement that we are denouncing the behavior that those officers had taken that day and that we agree that those behaviors should have never led to the death of George Floyd. And I think murder is an appropriate statement. It is a strong statement. I'm voting to keep it.
What do other people think? Does anybody else want to speak on this issue?
I'm Chair, Member Perez Velez, District 9. I hear, I think that perhaps we could keep the language as an amendment referred to legal for their interpretation for possible liability to BART. Behavior and action is not the same thing as an end result. So we just have to be careful because there hasn't been education of the case and the charges where there is creating a liability to BART. I am in favor of the word murder, but as a practical matter, perhaps as an amendment, it could be referred to legal in BART for possible concern on their part. We are an entity of BART. BART has not made a statement calling this a murder. Obviously, we know what we believe in, but I think it might be proper to add that.
Ken Liu, District 1. So I know that there were two autopsies that are pretty much public knowledge right now, both of which have used the term homicide. Again, it's, there are very strong words we can use. I just kind of feel like there's a, we've already passed conviction with the word murder prior to a jury actually convicting the second degree charges. So is there a strong word we can use and get everyone on the same page that, you know, won't lessen the letter at all, but still have very strong feelings?
Zach Bruno from BPOA. Yeah, I, I'm in the unfortunate position of like trying to water down a statement which we all do want to be kind of strong. And I don't wish for it to be watered down. I wish for it to be strong. My only reason for bringing it up is, Mr. Liu pointed out, was just that it could potentially be viewed or read as, yeah, the presumption of guilt, which as we know in our country is something that we don't, that we don't do and it's not lawful. I do, of course, look forward, as I mentioned, to, you know, getting this statement out. And I wonder if at a later date, when, when the killer is ultimately, I believe, I mean, he will be convicted at some point. And whenever that date does occur, then we could put out another statement at that time. And once he's been convicted of murder by a jury of his peers, then we could certainly at that stage use the term murder or murderer. So anyway, I didn't mean to throw a wrench in things, but it was just something that I wanted to make sure we all considered because we want to be just here.
Yeah, so this is Aaron Armstrong, Member-at-Large. I want to jump in. I want to thank everyone for the thoughtful conversation around the wording here. In my, when I did have the opportunity to review and edit, this was one of the edits that I made intentionally using the word murder. It was an intentional calling of the act of what it is. I hear the concerns around liability. Trust me, I work for my day job in the government and we're very concerned about that kind of stuff, so I hear it. But we're not calling this first degree murder. We're not calling this second degree murder. We're not calling it third degree murder. We're not calling it any specific charge. We're calling it what it is, is it's murder. It is the killing of another person. And, you know, we can use whatever synonym we want, but, you know, we can go back and change it later if we want. But we're all in agreement, I think, that it was murder. Both, in both cases. So I would not vote to support watering that language down in this specific case.
Pete Longmire?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, murder is a strong word. You know, some of us may believe that's exactly what it is. I get that. I think that we can get to where we want to get to with just a little wordsmithing and leave the word murder in. The thing that I want to be very, very careful of is, you know, who are we and what do we do? We are a deliberate body. We are a fact-finding body. So for us to say murder, I mean, I have to agree with my, you know, colleague, Mr. Liu. I think we can use the word murder, maybe if we kind of twist it in just a little way to where you take that sentence, "the needless and tragic death of George Floyd", who has been charged with murder. I think we're still using the word. We are, as a matter of fact, we're not saying that, you know, we're not convicting this guy already. Does that, does that make sense?
William White, District 3.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, the wordsmithing of that particular sentence, I think, is needed. In the very beginning, I heard the phrase murderous act. And I think that using that phrase within the context of that, that particular paragraph would make a statement that would be satisfactory. For example, the tragic murderous act that took the life of George Floyd. That should, should satisfy all concern.
Mr. Bruno, what do you, and Mr. Liu, how do you feel about something like that? Oh, no, an alternative, here's another alternative. The needless and outrageous killing of George Floyd. I mean, that's pretty, pretty clear. I'm sympathetic to people who want to use the word murder because of the force that it has in the, the meaning of it. I think, I think this is all, I agree with Aaron Armstrong that we're all basically the same point. What we're talking about is the intentional killing of another person. Or the killing, the, you know, the unlawful killing of another person. So a murderous act or an outrageous killing, does that, see either ones, move either side? Obviously, I'd like to move this along so we can get to the main conversation.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Zach Bruno again from BPOA. I think those are excellent options that Mr. Longmire and Mr. White offered and that you, Chair, offered as well. I'd be happy with any of those. Something to the effect of this needless and outrageous killing perpetrated by a killer who has been charged with murder. I know it gets wordy, but yeah, to leave the word murder in there, I understand and I agree that there could be some benefit and value to that. So yeah, I appreciate all three of those suggestions and I entertain a motion on either of them and I'd be happy to second it.
Hello.
Les Mensinger, District 6. The, could we use, okay, how about the, instead of murder, killing? We, again, the man has been charged with, we don't know, first degree, second degree murder, but he hasn't been tried. But could we opposite, I, I feel that we should vote on the way it's written pending legal of where we, where, if it's legal, it would not put BART in any position, but approve the letter pending on legal at BART, looking at the letter, and then we could come back and use the word killing or, or something like that. How about that?
Just a point of order, because we did have a motion and a second on the floor as well.
I know. Let me hear from Darren White, who I think was trying to speak.
Yes, Les, I like your idea and I think Mr. Liu said the same thing, or someone did. I would, I would like to keep the word murder in, run it by legal and see what they have to say. But I do believe, if I'm not wrong, that Chairperson Riss is an attorney and he wrote the letter and I'm pretty sure he's more up to speed on the laws or what should be or could be said. And so I definitely want to keep that murder in. And, you know, I want to say this and I'm going to be very direct. What y'all scared of? Just like the police, what y'all scared of? I mean, as a black man, what makes me so scary that y'all got to, that they want to kill, kill somebody that looked like me? So let's, let's keep murder in, keep it how it is. And, you know, and let's just deal with it. Let, let the chips fall where they fall. And I'll, I'll digress.
Chair Riss, William White, District 3. A question is, who is this letter going to and when will it be going out?
Does it really matter?
This is David Riss. So it's, it's just going out as a public statement. It'll go out on the website. On the, the questions about what legal effect it would have on, if any, on us, I don't think, I mean, this is just my personal opinion based on my experience in the law, but I don't think it's going to have any impact on us. It could, the concern that's been raised, which I think is understandable on some level, is that calling it a murder seems to be a specific legal conclusion. And since this is a body that is supposed to hear evidence and then make determinations, it seems like a little bit of prejudgment. And we're weighing that against the force that the word murder has. So I don't think it puts us, I would be shocked if the General Counsel's Office had any concerns about it other than the sort of constitutional thing that I just raised. I'm, I am fine with either outrageous killing or murder. There is, there is a motion that's been seconded on the floor. So unless it's withdrawn for the current, well, we have one other issue. I'm sorry. Zach, Zach Bruno has another issue with the, the statement. What's the second one?
Sure, that's right. I think maybe the best way would just be to give an intervening motion for an amendment to change the word murder to outrageous killing. And then if there's a second for that, then we can vote on that and see how that goes and then go back to the, the initial motion.
Chair, if I may, if I may jump in, unfortunately. Les, Les, let me, let me finish, Les, let me finish here. There was a, there was a motion on the floor. A substitute motion has been made. That motion takes precedent of the original motion. It has to be voted on. If Mr. Bruno wants to withdraw that motion and do a separate motion, substitute motion with both changes, that would apply. But right now, we have a motion on the floor that takes place of the first motion. That needs to be addressed or withdrawn. So we cannot continue to make motions to make substitute motions on top of substitute motion. So we got to vote on one or the other one or withdraw it.
I consider that a friendly amendment and I will not accept Les Mensinger, District 6.
Precisely. Maybe that's what I meant to say, a friendly amendment.
Les, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I didn't, Les, I did not accept the friendly amendment.
Oh, I see.
So I want the motion as stated.
Okay.
Can I get a point of clarification, Chair? Just, just, just clarification.
Sure.
Les Mensinger made the first motion. I believe Member Bruno made the second motion. Who seconded the second motion?
I think that's right.
No second was provided for the second motion, the subsequent motion made by Member Bruno. It needs to be seconded.
That's right.
Or we go back to their original motion.
Yeah.
That's right.
So is there, is there a second?
Ken Liu, District 1. I'll, I'll make a motion to extend discussion.
I don't want to, I think we need to reach, I think we need to reach resolution on this. So is there a second for the amendment that we're discussing?
Point of clarification, what was the exact wording of Member Bruno's amendment?
Replace the term with.
So it's replace the term murder with outrageous killing? Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
So now, we're going to do a vote on the subsequent motion by roll call. Is that correct, Member Perez Velez?
Do we need a public comment before we vote?
When you have a substitute motion, it is open for discussion. But the first motion is, it's, it's, it's on hold or tabled under a resolution that happens in a second motion.
Yeah, so let's, I, I think we should, I think we've discussed it adequately. We have lots more to discuss than this word. So let's, let's hold the roll call vote on, on Bruno's motion. Go ahead, Meg.
You ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Member Armstrong?
No.
Member Bruno?
Yes.
Member Gomez?
No.
Star Six, Member Longmire?
Is he muted?
No, I'm here.
What is your vote? Okay. Member Liu?
Yes.
Member Mensinger?
No.
Member Perez Velez? Member Riss?
No.
Member White? Darren White?
No. Phagetically, no.
Member William White?
No.
And the subsequent motion fails.
Okay. Is there another issue?
Eight no's, two yeses. Now we go back to the original motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Sure.
Second issue, Zach Bruno.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if we might then, if we're not going to say outrageous killing, if we might say alleged murder or keep the word murder in there. But I do feel it would be great if we can get to consensus and unanimity. I desire that very greatly. But at the moment, I'm just not comfortable voting yes on the wording as it is. So I know.
We just voted on that. We just voted on that and it was an overwhelming, it was nine to two or eight to two or something like that. So we need to move on. So what's the second issue?
All right, I recognize. I'm wondering if there might still be a tweak that we could make that wasn't outrageous killing, but to still keep the word murder in the statement as, as Mr. Longmire or as Mr. White had indicated. So I would make a motion to change from calling it a murder to some sort of description that would indicate that it was an alleged murder or that it is done by a person who has been charged with murder or something of that.
Chair Riss, if I, I'm not going to second this motion, but I think if I may, there was, there was a word murders act and it's also the possibility of using murder as charge. I mean, but either, either way, you cannot supply a motion with ambivalent action. You have to supply language or we have to move on.
And I agree with that. So if you can state your, if you can state your motion now, we'll hold one more vote, but then I want to move on to this issue. We have too much else to discuss.
Very good. Then the motion would, would read like this. I move that we include the words after changing, let me start again. Strike the word murder and replace with killing and add an additional, a positive clause stating, quote, "with murder being charged against the assailant," end quote.
Okay, is there a second?
Hey, Ken Liu, District 1. Before I do that, can I ask one question?
Sure.
After this letter is approved by this board, will it definitively go through BART Legal Counsel?
No, there's no reason it needs to go through BART Legal Counsel. There's just absolutely no reason. And, I mean, we don't, when we say things, we're, we're an advisory board. We're not speaking for the BART Board Directors. We don't, even if we were legally wrong that it was murder, even if he's acquitted, what like, what are they going to do? Sue us for a libel? I mean, it's a, it's not intent, it's not intentional. This is a matter of public interest. It's absolutely First Amendment protected speech. So is there a second? Otherwise, we're going to move on.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Pete Longmire, District 2. I will, I will second the motion.
Okay. Let's have a roll call vote again. Meg?
Hey, can you hear me on this right now?
Yes.
Hello? Oh, hi, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Janice Lee, I'm on the BART Board, just letting you know that I just turned the call about eight minutes ago.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
We're going to do, yeah, for Directors.
Okay, we are at our capacity of four board members at this meeting. We're going to do a roll call vote for the subsequent motion, number two, made by Member Bruno. Member Armstrong?
No.
Member Bruno? Member Gomez? Member Gomez? Waiting for her to unmute.
Christina, can't hear you.
I think she's frozen. Oh, there she goes. Member Gomez? Let me see if I can unmute her. One moment.
My apologies, my internet. No, my vote is no.
Okay, thank you. Member Longmire?
Yes.
Member Liu?
Yes.
Member Mensinger? Member Perez Velez? Member Riss?
No.
Member D White?
No.
Member William White?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, Mr. Bruno, the second issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In, in interest of moving on, I'll, I'll leave the second issue out and we'll just vote if it's all right with you on the motion as a stance.
I appreciate that and I appreciate your raising concerns about it. I'm glad that we can have a discussion about the issue and I sympathize to some degree. Okay, can we do a vote on this statement? An upper deck vote?
We're going to go back to the original. We're going to go back to the original motion, uh, moved by Member Minsinger and seconded by Darren White. Member Armstrong?
Yes.
Member Bruno?
No.
Member Gomez?
Yes.
Member Longmire?
Yes.
Member Lou?
Obstand.
Member Minsinger?
Yes.
Member Perez Vilas?
Yes.
Member Riz?
Yes.
Member Darren White?
Yes.
Member William White?
Yes.
The, the original motion passes.
Right. Okay, so we will finalize that and get it out. I appreciate the discussion. The next agenda item is just an open discussion regarding the death of, uh, Mr. Floyd. Um, and I want to, um, I want to open the floor, um, to everybody, um, to speak on the board. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak first. Um, I don't, I don't have any special insight. I'm a white male. Um, I care about these issues, but I want to take space and time to other people. Um, and I hope that the discussion will be completely open and candid and even if painful. So who would, who would like to speak?
This is Darren White. I, I'd like to speak.
Please.
First, um, Chair Riz, thank you for calling this meeting. I'm glad I was available today to attend. What I would like to say, it's hard to keep it short, but I'm gonna do my best. I'm fifty-four years old. I have a daughter that is twenty-six and a daughter that is twenty-nine. And to think that in two thousand twenty, they would still have to deal with some of the stuff that, um, when I was abused, that's, uh, I, I would be farther along. And I get emotional because some of you may or may not know that I worked with the reentry population and a lot of black men. I currently hold a position for the Obama Foundation and my brother Keeper Alliance. So the majority of all of them, and the boys I work with are young men of color. And to think in two thousand twenty that someone can murder someone and, and just blatantly think they're going to get away with it is, is, is unacceptable. And right now, in two thousand twenty, this is a time for change. It's not a time for me to be, uh, passive aggressive or to a certain degree diplomatic toward. And, um, it's, 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 it's hard for me to even try to put this in, you know, civil diplomatic words the way that I feel right now. The concern that young men that look like me can get killed by law enforcement with no, uh, consequences or repercussions. To think that I have daughters out there that this possibly could happen to as well. So, um, whatever we can do to make BART police, um, better, safer for not only blacks and, and people of color, but all people. The abolishment of BART police, I believe, is totally, totally out of the picture because police and law enforcement are needed. But we need good, honest, respectful law enforcement officers and administration to do their jobs to the best of their ability and not be scared. Like I said earlier, this is, this is just a question and I'll come get off my phone. What makes us so scary? You guys have, they have guns, they have training, they have backup. What makes responding to a call with a black or brown person so scary to police officers that the first thing they have to do is shoot us? And it, it's time for a change and I'm going to do whatever I need to do to make change. Civilly, um, I will attend whatever meeting, write whatever letter, show up to whatever I need to show up to, to make sure that this police department does the best that they can do and do better. Because we definitely don't want another Oscar Grant situation. And it's a shame that somebody has to be killed for boards like this to exist or change to happen. So that's what I have to say right now. I'm going to stop because if I don't stop, I might say some things that are not appropriate. And, um, I was, I was raised better than that. So, thank you for letting me speak and I digress.
Thank you, Mr. White. This is David Riz again. Let me, um, since we have a lot of people on the phone, um, and I do want to have a long public comment. I want to hear from everybody who can and we started at four and it's four forty. I do want to get to that. I want to invite people on the board who have statements that they want to make to go ahead and make them, but not, and I'm not suggesting that Mr. White was going on too long at all. But there is another agenda item after public comment and I want to get to public comment to hear people. So, um, for, so more, I invite more people to, 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 to speak up, but I just want to ask you to be mindful of keeping it somewhat brief. We will have, this is the first in my view of multiple meetings addressed at this issue. So you will not be, um, you will not be held short in the long term. Yes, Mr. Perez Vilas.
Just Perez Vilas, District Nine. I'd like to make a statement for the record because it is important. Sometimes we, we, our emotions are there which are, which are the most important thing that we have, but I want to make sure that my voice are correct. I will have to leave the meeting to go into a use of force policy subcommittee meeting for the Berkeley Police Bureau Commission. So I'd like to say what I need to say because the work continues all the way throughout the Bay Area. So, and I sent you this statement, um, um, so it's on the record, um, Mr. Riz. But thank you, Chair Riz, and the BART Board of Directors for the opportunity to participate in this forum and for creating a platform for our voices and the voices of our community to be heard. First and foremost, I would like to offer my deep condolences to the Floyd family and our victims and condemn the actions taken by some law enforcement officers. To an uncuriously stated, black lives matter. This past week, we have seen protests and demonstrations following the senseless deaths of George Floyd in additions to those of Alma Ebbrey, Breonna Taylor, and other members of law enforcement. Let us not forget that our own history and beginning was created by the energy, commitment, and steadfast voices of the Justice for Oscar Grant movement. Our justice system and our public safety institutions have failed us. In this country, issues of implicit bias within our police system are directly related to the systemic racism that plagues our communities at a more alarming rate than the coronavirus. We cannot have a healthy nation without addressing this long existing plague as well. We who engage in the work of oversight know that the struggle for change can never be truly achieved without the voices of our communities. We continue to cringe at the notion that only as a end result of a tragedy do we ever come to terms with the need for systemic reform. Oversight and criminal justice reform should not, should not and never be reactive, but proactive and diligent. Unfortunately, our own political systems have let us down as well. Piecemeal solutions and Band-Aid measures implemented out of desire to do something or jump on the wagon or be seen as responding to the times are never enough. Although they can affect change, they can also miss the mark entirely. What we need is a full revision of the system. How, when, and why we police must be recalibrated and reimagined. Our own criminal system must be overhauled to achieve true equality of due process under the law. For anyone wondering what they can do to support this righteous cause, look to foster equality, respect, and the dignity of everyone in your community. We know what this entails. Look beyond your familiar circles and comfort levels and embrace others' similarity and diversity. Now it is time for us as a nation and as a community through this ever-present and endless struggle to achieve our own one word and commitment to equality, respect, dignity, and justice for all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Vilas. Do others, uh, on the CRB want to speak up?
This is Member Armstrong, uh, at large, Vice Chair. I want to thank Member White and, uh, Member Perez Vilas for, for their comments on, on this, uh, very important and somber issue. Uh, I've been reflecting a lot, um, recently and, I mean, a lot of you know I, I come from the middle of the country. I hail from a very conservative family and so we've been having a lot of conversations recently around, uh, police brutality, around race and racism, uh, in this country and, and it's, you know, what you said, Darren, uh, Member White, really moved me that, that we're not further along and that, than we should be. You know, and it's disappointing for everybody to, to feel that and to, uh, to see that today. So, in, you know, in thinking, what can we do? Because I, I'm in a position here on the, the CRB where I have a voice and I can use it and I want to use it for difference and for good. I think back to one of my very first walkthroughs with the BART CRB, walking through the, uh, the trains following the deputies as they went through their job. And I think about the tasks that they were assigned to do along that, that journey that I was with them. It was mostly kicking people off the trains for, for sleeping and for being homeless. And, and I wonder, is this really the job of our most heavily armed, highly paid public employees? Uh, or is this a, a job that could be better assigned to somebody that's better trained, more qualified, less armed? You know, and, and so I want to use this position. I want to use my voice to, to try and lift up the, the voices of people of color to hear what they're saying and to, to try and make a, a difference for positive. So Chair Riz, I appreciate the, the energy that you've put into holding this, this special meeting and for challenging and uplifting this board to do more, uh, to continue to lead and I hope that we will continue to do that. Thank you.
Do others want to make a, a comment, uh, before we move towards public comment?
Les Minsinger, District Six. I would, I would, uh, it's tragic, this death that was Mr. Floyd's. And it's really sad that this was because of a Minneapolis police policy that this officer used for, uh, this to happen, at which time, two days later, the city council jerked the policy. It's sad and thank God we have a CRB and people to look at policies so that our police department can be much better than other police departments and that we go vigorously through all policies, that something like this will never happen at BART again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minsinger. Um, does anybody else want to speak?
Mr. Chair, this is Zach Bruno. I'd like to just briefly speak.
Please.
Thank you. Yeah, Zach Bruno, representing BPOA and BPMA. Uh, I agree with the comments that have been given already. Thank you all and thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling this meeting. Yeah, it's just been really rough to think that anybody in this country would be, would be treated in the way that Mr. Floyd was and would be killed. And, uh, so that's, it saddened me personally, but it's also, uh, caused me to dig in and, and figure out, well, what, what could I possibly do to better prevent this from happening in the future? I think we've all kind of been thinking that more than we typically do. Of course, because I've been appointed by the BART Police Association, BART Police Managers Association, it's important for me to give a little perspective from the police officer's side of things. Certainly in no way at all to defend what happened in Minneapolis or in some other place. But to point out that the BART police do not have a policy in any way that would condone or would, would be in favor of what happened to Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis. And I'm very happy to report that. I'm also very happy to report that since the tragic events that, that led to the killing of Oscar Grant, this body has done excellent work before I got on this board. But even as I've been on, I've seen really great progress made, recommendations made, and policies brought about by the BART Board of Directors that have been good. I just want to point out that, um, I think that this group is making a difference. Thank everybody on this board for, for being a part of it and for helping me learn some things. Of course, my day job is as a professor, as a researcher, and so I'm interested in the data. I did a little checking. The Washington Post points out that in the last year from which there is data on this source, there were twenty-nine unarmed people killed by police officers in the year 2019. That's certainly too many. One is too many. There were twenty-nine that happened just last year. Uh, as it happens, nine of those were African-American and nineteen of them were white. I bring this up not to be provocative or to just say what's going on. But I, I would just like to point out that by and large, those who are in law enforcement are not racist killers. They are good people who put their lives on the line and wear the badge and strap on their firearm and their taser each day. And, um, some of them have made horrifying mistakes, um, perhaps even murderous mistakes. And perhaps not even mistakes, perhaps murderous acts. But, uh, I just wanted to point out that by and large, we have amazingly decent, humble, honorable men and women who are working in our law enforcement communities and particularly in the BART Police Department. And I for one would just like to thank them. I'm glad that in our last meeting, we were able to adjourn in honor of Floyd. I wonder if, uh, in this meeting today, we might adjourn in honor of Pat Underwood, who was a law enforcement officer who was killed in the line of duty just two weeks ago in downtown Oakland outside the federal building, a few blocks from where we typically would meet on Webster Street. He was married, had a family. He was doing his job, standing guard and, uh, a white van pulled up, opened fire, injured his partner and killed him. He happened to be African-American. And he, he was doing his duty and paid for with his life to keep us safe. And so I would make a motion that ultimately, when we do adjourn this meeting today, it would be in memory of Pat Underwood. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all.
This is Member Gomez. I would like to speak.
Yeah, you can. Um, but this is, we're just on a discussion matter right now, so we're not entertaining questions. Go ahead, um, Ms. Gomez.
So, Member Gomez, District Seven. I'm shaking a little having this conversation, so I apologize ahead of time. First thing I want to say is that I'm actually appalled the numbers of white people that have been killed compared to black people was brought up just right now. Any good researcher and any good person that looks at data would know that when we're talking about populations and disparities, that we also have to take into account the number of people that are in the general population. So the only reason why we have more white folks that you can even count have been killed by black folks is because we're looking at a disproportionate number of people in the general population being killed at an alarming rate by police. I want to make sure that I state that, that that is actually the truth. I want to make sure that I state that, that that is actually the truth. The second thing that I want to say is that we are not absolved of responsibility of how far BART has to go. No, we haven't seen, you know, continuous and, you know, egregious accounts of BART police officers maiming and killing police officers, but the ones that we have, they're egregious and they're outrageous and we should never in any, in any way think that somehow because we have less than another department, that somehow that in any way absolves us from needing to look at our own stuff. I also want to say that the majority of what we're really talking about is the way that implicit bias actually plays into the everyday contact with our passengers. It is the everyday contact with black girls and black men and people of color and queer people who are judged by their appearance unconsciously or consciously and are targeted for things like fare evasion, are targeted for eating a sandwich on BART, targeted for things that we do every day and that we can't just sit here and pretend like don't happen. So I just want to say that as, as a member of this, a member of this board, it would behoove us all to, before we get a little too congratulatory, to remember that we have a task at hand and that we see data every, every meeting and that we are not always happy with that data. And there is a ways to go for us. We need to figure out what it is that BART police do not need to be doing on trains. Should they actually be going through the trains and actually deciding whether or not people need to be kicked off for not having a home? Should they be interacting with our mentally ill passengers? So I just really want us to take this role seriously. I want us to remember that we have a lot of work to do and we do have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
William White.
Yes. First, I'd like to say that my history goes back to the 60s when young children were killed in churches, when voting rights advocates were pulled over, killed and burned, when marchers were trying to cross a bridge, were sprayed with hoses and bitten by dogs. I go back to those days and I look at these days. Yes, there has been a lot of changes, but I see and I feel the heart of many, and I'm going to say this, whites who took part in those changes. I see those hearts, they have hardened over the years and have ignored what they were fighting for back in those days. I say that because every day before this event, you would hear about events such as Mr. Floyd's encounter, and the whites would just ignore it. And they would have small discussions, but then they would go along their merry way and the African-American brown population and other minorities would fester with anger because they knew that the next day would bring the same, the same type of, same type of behavior from the law enforcement agencies that were established to protect all. Well, we know how, what the word "all" means based on what history has shown us. I joined police oversight back in 1996 in the city of Berkeley, and recently I moved to BART after the Oscar Grant killing. I was part of the development of this, this particular board, and I remember distinctly how the union fought tooth and nail against every aspect of the development of this board. I was angry because they had just killed a young man for no reason, and we were telling them, "We want some way of controlling your behavior." Well, we got that control. What we need now are this type of control over law enforcement throughout the United States. Every single municipality in this country should have an oversight board like BART Oversight Board, Berkeley's Oversight Board, San Jose's Oversight Board, a board for people to come to and voice their concerns over the behavior of the quote "bad apples" in With that, there's a new time ahead of us, a time where we can move to where you look at a country like Japan, where law enforcement doesn't kill people. Look at a country like England, where law enforcement doesn't kill people. Look at, there's plenty of civilizations in this world where you don't have to kill people to keep people behaving in the right way. And we need that type of behavior from our police departments throughout this United States. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. White. I think almost everybody on the board has spoken. Mr. Lou or Mr. Longmire, did you want to say anything further?
Mr. Chair, Pete Longmire, District Two.
Let's have Mr. Lou first, and you don't have to say anything, we're going to have later opportunities to speak, but if you want to, I want to move to public comment next.
I'll keep it short. I think we could all agree that all the actions that happened to Mr. Floyd are, with, using the strongest words possible, wrong in all sense of the term. And for the record, you know, I'm standing with everyone else on the board here with, and I listen and hear what everyone else is saying. And yeah, I've seen it and we do need to take action and I do believe we are moving in the right direction. And so as a committee, I am standing with everyone else at the same time.
Thank you, that's great. Mr. Longmire.
Mr. Chair, you know, I think I'm going to reserve my comments for another time. This is not really a good time for me to express what I want to feel. My feelings are very strong. I hail from a different background than my colleagues, so I think I'll reserve comment right now, but I would love to share my feelings and my thoughts with my colleagues at a later date.
Okay, understood. Darren White, did you have a comment that you wanted to make? Doesn't sound like it, I think he, yeah?
Yes, I did. Man, this is, this is, this is, this is a tough one, Chair Riske, but during this time that our nation is going through, some of the comments that I read on social media and, and, and some of the things that I'm hearing tonight and I hear every day since we have a new regime running, running the country, the best thing that I can say is that it's good to know where, where, where certain people stand so you know how to deal with them upfront. I'd rather know how you are, how you feel. I couldn't respect somebody more that can look at me on my face and tell, tell me how you feel upfront than to act some way in front of me and then behind my back do something else. So, just knowing where certain people stand on certain, certain things, thank you, because then that lets me know how I can deal with and approach you at other times. So, I want to say that I believe this board is doing the best it can. I do believe BART is well ahead of a lot of law enforcement agencies in this country, and I commend them on that. And it's because of this board, I believe, that's why they are ahead, and the incident with Oscar Grant is why they had to even implement some of that stuff. So as long as we can continue on a path to do better, I'm going to support better. And just like Brother Longmire, I have a different view and a different background with law enforcement and as a black man, that, like you said, the Chair Riske, that we'll have another opportunity to talk later. I would love to talk more amongst us and see how we can work together, work together to make this board and BART police the best that it can be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White. We are going to go into public comment, and but first, we're going to check on the BART Board Directors because we can't have too many of them on the call at the same time. I think we're still under the limit, but I want to go through the directors first if they want to speak, and then we'll start calling the members of the public by telephone number, since I can see there are a lot of people on the line. So let me start, Janice Lee, are you on the line? And do you want to?
Yep, I'm here, I just put me and myself.
Thank you. Go ahead and make a public comment.
Great. I'm, I'm going to try to keep this under three minutes. I first want to just deeply, deeply thank you all, the CRB members, for taking the additional time to have this special meeting today. I know you just met last Monday, so I want to thank you, Chair Riske, for calling this meeting, and you know, I've been listening to the commentary for a last little bit here. I want to say I was personally moved by Member Gomez's comments just now. I have been to a past CRB meeting and have said hey. So for you, for those who don't know, my name is Janice Lee. I was just elected to the BART Board in November 2018, along with a couple other new directors. I represent District Eight, which is the west side of San Francisco. I am a queer woman of color. I have worked as a community organizer for the past, gosh, now it's like 12 years. I really cut my teeth. I started a community center back in Buffalo, New York, working predominantly with teens of color, particularly refugees from Africa. And that was really when I had the first experience of how people of color uniquely interact negatively with police enforcement. So a few remarks here. There are multiple things that can be true at the same time, and there are many things, I believe, that I think are at odds with each other and that I continue to think about as I sort of navigate what's happening right now with BART. So there are four things there. First, I fundamentally believe that the institution of police is mired in a racist history. This does not speak to any individual officer, it does speak to our police department specifically. This is that the institution of law enforcement and policing in the United States is racist. I recognize that these words can be hard to hear, but we are a country that's founded in a racist past of slavery, of disallowing women to the right to vote, and a country that until this morning, in the Supreme Court ruling this morning, allowed LGBTQ people to be fired from their jobs because they are LGBTQ. So to say that the history of police is racist is not an outrageous statement. If you are outraged, I would ask you to ask yourself why. Second, keeping in mind that first thing, it is also true, and I do truly believe that BART police is far, far ahead of the curve. Other CRB members have already pointed this out when it comes to police reform. And truly, it is because of the murder of Oscar Grant that forced this agency, this transit system, to reckon with itself. You all as CRB members have a seat on this because of the reforms that came after January 1st, 2009. The third thing is that it is also true that there is a movement and a groundswell of people calling for the defunding and the abolition of police right now and have been for decades. To ignore that groundswell of support, as I said at the BART Board meeting last week, is to be willfully ignorant. And as we rage, as our communities are taking to the streets, they're burning stuff, they're taking to the streets to reject police brutality, that has only led to more police brutality. And more and more black brothers and sisters continue to be killed by law enforcement throughout the country. Right here, Shawn Montarosa, killed by California Highway Patrol in Atlanta Friday evening, Richard Brooks, and the names, they just continue to come. And lastly, the thing that is also true is that it is true that black folks continue to be killed and to be found dead at and on BART. So I just want to be clear about where I, just one of the nine BART directors, stand. I think that all those things can continue to be true and that I can continue to believe all those things in tension. So where do I stand now? First, I'm committed to the budget before us. I think you all probably know of this budget and the fiscal year 21 budget that the BART Board is expected to approve on June 25th. Because I do think it's important to keep our BART workers employed, including BART police, and to give our incredible frontline employees a peace of mind that we are grateful for their work and that we need them to run our system and their riders, to be able to tell them we are ready to scale up service when our rider returns. But I'm not sure this has been made clear to CRB. The staff is going to be coming back to the board with quarterly revisions. The first one is expected to be in October of this year. I do want to revisit our priorities, and I am open to radical police reforms, including defunding police and shifting funds to social workers, unarmed presence, and other proven ways to make our transit system safe. From everything I have seen and heard, no police officer becomes a sworn officer so that they can forcibly enforce fare evasion, enforce eating and drinking or skateboarding on BART platforms. So why are armed officers put in charge of that? I do think it is time that we rethink why our system isn't safe and what the role of BART police is to keep our system, our employees, and our BART riders safe. We already know that across the board, folks have questions about our system's safety because what we are doing today is not enough. So all I'm going to end is by saying that I do think that the CRB, this body, will be the forefront of the conversation here, and I will ask the board, the BART Board, to rely on CRB to do the work and be a key venue of these conversations. I look forward to engaging all of you. My email is janice.lee@bart.gov. Please engage the board, and thank you again, Chair Riske, for reaching out to the board members and asking us to be here with y'all today.
Thank you so much. Let's keep going through the BART Board Directors to make sure that we don't have more than four. Director Rebecca Saltzman, are you on the line, and would you like to make a comment?
You can press star six to mute yourself, Director Saltzman.
Right, it sounds like maybe she had to drop off.
Hi, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm here. I just had to get unmuted and I'm caring for my baby daughter at the moment, so I didn't have as many hands available. So I will be very brief, but thank you so much for having this meeting and for the resolution that you passed and for bringing such focus to this issue. I want to, I'm mostly here to listen to what you have to say and I want to work really closely with the CRB and looking at, with the police department and looking at the reforms that are needed and moving Um, as looking at, and with the police department and looking at the reforms that are needed and moving this discussion forward. Um, I'm very open to recommendations that you make that need sign off by the BART Board, so I, I look forward to working with all of you. And I did want to mention that I have made a recommendation for a change to the budget that had been proposed, which is to. Um, there was a budget recommendation to hire more police officers and fair enforcers to enforce social distancing. And I have requested to instead um see the numbers come back of hiring unarmed ambassadors instead. The ambassador program was an idea of uh Director Dusty that was brought forward by several of us a couple of years ago. We just started implementing this year. And I think that is one option for moving forward to what Director Janice Lee just said. About, you know, figuring out how to have police focused on the real crimes and to have unarmed ambassadors or social workers. Or however we, however we figure it out to focus on the other big issues that are happening on BART. But that don't require a badge and a gun to address. Um, so I, I look forward to working with you all on that. Um, and if you have other ideas, both for the budget or other policies. I would love to hear them as well. Um, my email address is rebecca.saltzman@bart.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Saltzman, for that. Um, Director Rayburn, are you on the line? Would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Chair Risk. This is Robert Rayburn. I represent the Oakland, San Leandro and Alameda areas. And I was elected in 2010, shortly after the Oscar Grant murder. And there have been, of course, tremendous reforms, including this board, the Office of the Independent Auditor. I've attended most of the meetings of this board ever since it was formed. Um, I appreciate that last Monday I was given the opportunity to share with you that we were moving forward with. Uh, a resolution that was passed uh in support of Congresswoman Barbara Lee's resolution to establish trust. And uh build racial healing. And. I'm interested as mostly today in seeing that your discussion that you started last Monday. And you didn't start the discussion last Monday on the new policies or changes that are ne- needed. You've been doing this ever since the formation of this board and we adopted 50 new uh policies over the past. In, in, actually in 2018 as a board of directors. That changed the uh initial mission and reflected both the national black law enforcement groups. And as well as the uh independent uh input from outside consultants. I want to see you get to your final agenda item today and approve changes. That you can all agree on that we need to embrace. I know in the past you've focused on the use of force, on the carotid holds, as well as early, early warning for officers. You've been involved from day one when we adopted the uh policies regarding what at the time was uh. A watershed effort to uh make sure that BART officers were armed with non-lethal force, the tasers. And that they were also armed with cameras. And so these are important things that you have been a participant in. And I want to ensure that you continue to have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rayburn. Um, I think we have one other director. Director Liz Ames, are you on the phone and would you like to make a public comment?
Star six, Director Ames, to speak and unmute yourself.
Right, maybe she had to drop off. Um, let me know, Mag, if she comes back on. Um, okay, I want to start.
She is still on the line. Um, Director Ames, you can press star six and unmute yourself.
Ahah. Can you hear me? This is Director Ames. Hi, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. I just, I heard the comments about um. You know, everybody, every city should have a police oversight board to um, just. The ne- the need for justice and there's no, you know, there's um. Because apparently there's just no consequences for these kind of tragic acts. So. I, I do think society and the, you know, the community is at a tipping point, obviously. And uh the CRB is um essential to accountability. To making sure that we uh, the BART police and the BART Board is accountable. And uh, I think it's an essential function that I think a lot of communities in the community are going to look to. When they make substantial changes. So I really applaud your work here. I look forward to seeing great policy changes. Ideas, reforms possibly. Uh, we'll, we'll see what happens. But in regards to the budget. Uh, I think a lot more can be done. I've, I've asked for more cuts from staffing, pay raises. They're getting a 2.75% pay raise. And uh, there's a lot of things that can be done on the budget right now and I don't agree with what's going forward. But we do have a plan for the fair gates. It's not fully funded. That came out in the last grand jury report from Contra Costa County. And I'm, I'm happy that uh, the, the grand jury report that we just received asked for a funding plan and putting in the fair gate. So I think we're making slow progress. It doesn't seem fast enough. And I do appreciate this. This year, I mean, your work for continuous improvement. I'm looking forward to uh your leadership and guidance. So. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Ames. Okay, so we're going to move into public comment now. Um, public comment um should be restricted to three minutes. Um, so please um be mindful of your time. Um, Mag Tatum, our secretary, will be timing you and let you know when your time is up. And we'll ask that you politely um stop, finish your thought when you're done. Um, and I think the way we're going to do this is um, if you, I'm gonna, I have a list of, of telephone numbers. That are on the conference call right now. So I'm going to call, I'm going to go through them and I'm going to call out numbers. Um, and if you're on the line and a, a member of the public, press, is it star six, Mag?
Yes.
Once you hear your number and um you'll have three minutes, please um introduce yourself. Just give us your name when you um start. Um, and if others could please keep their, their um telephones muted, I'd appreciate it. All right, uh, we're going to start with a number that just joined, uh, 303-589-6616. Please let us know if you want to make a public comment. That's 303-589-6616.
Press star six and unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I don't need to make comment right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next number is 310-702-5825. 310-702-5825.
Hi, uh, my name is Tyler. Um, first of all, can you please not read people's full phone numbers on a meeting that's-
Sure.
-going to be reported and posted publicly? Do the last four digits or something like that?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Thanks. Um, I wasn't going to call in and talk about um defunding police or abolishing police. Um, but since I'm talking anyway, I will just say that like, if abolishing police entirely seems too radical. Abolishing BART police and then we'll still have SFPD, Oakland PD, all these other police departments that cover the areas that BART covers. I think that should at least be considered. Um, but I, I did want to call in and say um. That it's a little disappointing that the question of taking the word murder out of the statement that you guys wrote was even a question. Of course it was murder. And if you are literally a member of the jury that's going to be deciding that case, that's one thing. But if you're literally anyone else, call it murder. That's what it is. Um, and I, I, I think I missed it. I think that is what you ended up doing. Um, but the fact, again, the fact that was even a question is uh frankly a little ridiculous.
Thank you for that comment. I appreciate it. Okay, the next number is a 408 area code and the last two digits are 2871. 408 and 2871. Please let us know if you want to make a public comment.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next, the next caller is area code 415 and the last two, the last four digits are 2960. 2960. 415-2960 are the last four digits. Star six, if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, the next number is area code 415. Lasted four digits are 5378. 5378. Go, 5378, did you want to make a comment? Okay, we'll move on. Um, the next number is 415 and the last digits are last four. Oops. Did, um, the last four digits, 415-5378. Area code 415-5378 just muted itself. Okay, 415-1956 are the last four digits. 415-1956. Okay, 415, last four digits are 065. Oops, go ahead. What do we have there? We can't hear you if you're making a public comment. Try again. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody. Um, let's move on. At the end of this, we'll ask if anybody's left out, so don't worry. 415. Um, 415, the first is the area code, the last four digits are 3127. 3127, do you want to make a public comment?
Oh, I've been waiting for pa- public comments and public comments come on and they mute me.
Yep, you're, you're, we can hear you. Go ahead. Is that 5378? Make, please make a public comment.
Oh, yes, it is. Thank you. This is Yolanda Banks, the mother of a murdered child, Shaleen Tindall. January the 3rd, 2018 by a BART officer. This brutish act have gone on before and after B.C. Kane killed his brother Abel, meaning humanity, the children of humanity. And if you don't take precedence in life, then the world of death will take over. George Floyd's death has become a beacon of light for all young people and old as well. To look and live, to give judgment to the people as the woman stands there symbol. With the staff in her hand and the scale. But yes, she's blindfolded. She can't see. So how can you give due judgment? Each of you, you debated on yes or no, should it be murder? Well, the Mosaic Law talks about thou shall not kill. Do you reword or rechange the word in order to fit your narrative or narrative? I lost the son that I gave birth to. I carried him. I'm the keeper and holder. I was the breath of his life when he was in my womb. I breastfed him. He was my son that was taken from me by a BART officer. Walking to BART with his two children and his companion, murdered, shot in the back three times. But no, you won't speak of this because I'm Hebrew. I'm of an indigenous and cultural way of life. See, you owe it to the people to give justice and liberty to all. But yet it have not been given. Why? Because of the kernel minds and the lower nature of Cain won't allow you to do that which is right. And no wise would I be in a debate if it was murder or not. But we saw with our own eyes it was murder. Testify that which you see with your own eyes. And you saw him calling out for his mother. Until you come into the mind and the principle of the femininity principle, the mothers who are the carriers of life, who are losing their children. Their children are being taken away. You will be held accountable. You cannot scratch this off and change it. But it's going to take the truth, wisdom, knowledge and most of all, an understanding. Lift up your voice and make a difference. Don't beat around, around the bush. Losing my 28-year-old son, Shaleen Tindall. It's horrifying. Every day, every single day. And I'm a strong mother because I fought. I fought in court. But every single day I deal with a part of me, that naval cord that I cut him off from. That each of you are cut off from a mother. How can you not recognize the mother's children in their life? I'm requesting that each of you do that which is holy, do that which is right. And the only way I can say bless shall you be if you do so. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment. Um, the next, the next person uh on my list is area code 415. Uh, 1956 are the last four digits. I think we did this one. Okay, 415, last four digits are 0659. 415-0659 are the last four digits. Okay, 415-3127. 3127, it's star, star six to unmute yourself. 415, last four digits are 3127. The next number on the list is area code 419. And the last four digits are 9846. 9846. Go ahead. 419-9846, we can't hear you. It looks like you've unmuted yourself, but I'm not hearing you.
Can you hear me?
Mag, yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Um, so hi, my name is Krista Hartsack and I'm a resident of San Francisco. I'm calling today to ask you all to do what is in your power to defund BART police and instead use the funding to positively reinvest in our public transit system and the communities it serves. BART police are unnecessary and using them in cases of fair evasion or quality of life is cruel and punitive. BART police are poor use of the already limited funding available to the public transit lifeline of our region. Accessible public transit is a boon to our communities and local economy and punishment for fair evasion and things like sleeping on trains is criminalizing poverty at best and deadly at worst. Enforcement penalizes people for being poor and it inserts unnecessary armed officers into otherwise peaceful interactions, as we saw with the tragic killing of Oscar Grant, which formed this board. Uh, Shaleen Tindall, whose mother we just heard from earlier in this call and others. BART police creates an unsafe environment and possibly carceral ramifications for a public service that many, including people with low incomes, communities of color, undocumented immigrants and others rely on to work. Be family and to make the Bay Area a great place- undocumented immigrants and others rely on to work, be family and to make the Bay Area a great place to live. But you are involved with this board, so I don't need to tell you why BART's important. But policing denies these people and others their safety. Reforming the police is not enough. Inserting armed officers into our transit is unnecessary and misguided. Um, as Janice and many others have said, the institution of policing itself is racist. Changing use of force policies, equipping police with cameras and arming police with still deadly tasers in addition to their guns will not prevent racist violence from being enacted by armed officers. Ask to engage daily with the public. Removing armed officers and diverting that funding to other options, including expanding access to, to public transit, funding the homeless outreach team and more would do that. And it's for these reasons and more that I join many others in asking you to defund the BART police and reinvest that funding in our community. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next number on the, the list is area code four two five. And the last four digits are eighteen twenty-nine. Eighteen twenty-nine, star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, my name is Marty Deans. I live in San Francisco. Uh, my home station is Glen Park. And I just want to say that I'm also pretty disappointed with the early motions to remove the word murder from the George Floyd statement. I think that citing dictionary definitions, which we've seen on the BART board as well, is just a way to absolve you of responsibility for like making a statement to your community or taking actions to fix that thing. I'm also extremely disappointed in the comments that were made by Zach Bruno that included data around white versus black murder by law enforcement. That's a pretty shameful use of data. If you're a researcher, you should know better than that, how to analyze those numbers. And in an emotionally charged conversation, perhaps keep them to yourself. I also want to pile on that I would encourage the defunding or significantly reduced funding of BART, um, excuse me, BART police. I ride BART every day. If you go to work, um, BART police have only, I've only seen them escalate situations that could have been resolved without use of force or, um, you know, like having those weapons on their person does nothing but intimidate the people that they are talking to who are members of our community, who are often paying BART members, who deserve, you know, better than that. And, uh, that is it. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Um, the next number on my list is five one zero. And the last four digits are four six zero nine. Four six zero nine. You can press, uh, star six to unmute yourself. Area code, go ahead.
I have no comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next person on the list is area code five one zero. And the last four digits are three nine two seven. Three nine two seven. Uh, press star six to unmute yourself. Three nine two seven. Okay, the next number on the list is also five one zero. And the last four digits are one four zero one. One four zero one. Area code five one oh, last four digits, one four zero, one four zero one. Okay. Next caller is five one zero. Uh, the last four digits are six one five four. Six one five four. Do you want to make a public comment? Press star six. Okay, the next person on the line is five one zero. And the last four digits are five six oh five. Five six zero five. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hello. My name is Karis Taylor and I'm a public school teacher and I live here in West Oakland. Um, it is dangerous to ride BART if you are black, brown, unhoused or experiencing a mental health crisis. And if you are some combination of any of those things, the threat to your life is even more acute. BART police do not make our community more safe. They are untrained and unequipped to deal with the public health emergencies that make up the majority of the disruptions to our public commutes. They are employed to prioritize property and profits over human life. It has become unbearably obvious, even to shamefully oblivious white people such as myself, that police officers, regardless of their city or department, conduct themselves in a way that dehumanizes humans who are not evidently middle or upper-class white people. This is not an issue of a few individual officers who are not paying attention during their implicit bias training. This is rooted in a police culture that lacks moral and legal accountability. This is a matter of carelessly allocated resources. I want my tax dollars to go to tending to the needs of our most vulnerable community members so that desperation and perpetual disenfranchisement stop trapping people in trauma cycles. The BART police do not make us safe. Secure and affordable housing would make us safe. Healthcare would make us safe. Trauma-informed crisis intervention specialists trained in de-escalation would make us safe. Those things don't exist right now and part of the reason for this is because our city slash state's funds are going to militarize, who kill people of color with impunity. As evidenced by the thousands of us marching through the streets these past two weeks, our community demands police departments, including BARTs, be defunded. In the meantime, we call upon you to decrease the number of BART police and order them to stop enforcing fair evasion and sandwich eating, which only give them an excuse to harass and assault our community members. We also want you to put resources towards outreach to our houseless neighbors who take refuge in BART stations in cars since there are precious few other places they are allowed to exist in our ruthlessly capitalist society. Thank you for taking the time to listen to another furious public school teacher who is at her wits' end fearing for her black students' lives. I yield my time.
Thank you for that public comment. Um, the next person on the list is area code five one zero. And the last four digits are seven five five eight. Seven five five eight. To unmute yourself, press star five, uh, six. Go ahead.
Uh, yes. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I am Cephus, affectionately known to the community as Uncle Bobby X. I am the uncle of Oscar Grant. Uh, I guess I'm a little disturbed too and a little shaken up, but I'm gonna see if I can put this together. Okay, there is no horror comparable to the murder of your loved ones by those that we believe were here to serve and protect us. It is forever etched in my memory, our family memory, more perhaps because we have it on video. And so I definitely know what the George Floyd family is going through and many others that have actually witnessed their loved ones get murdered on video. The power of the police to use deadly force is one of the most significant responsibilities we can give any public official. That responsibility must be guided by common sense legislation that protects human rights and saves human life. I am disturbed by Bruno's statement and take issue with his statement. His statement is more like that argument concerning whether we should say Black Lives Matter or All Lives Matter. All lives cannot matter if Black lives matter, don't matter. So it's important for us to realize that we have to be clear in our statements. I'm really became interested in this meeting more so, first of all, thank you, David, for calling them. But, uh, concerning a BART board member, Deborah Allen, and her racist statements last week. And I wanted to have a discussion about that, but now I've been taken for a twist because I'm not sure how this Zachary Bruno became a part of the Oversight Committee and he's representing the police and is making it clear that we all hear that that's what he's there for. So any kind of common sense legislation or suggestions that's going to pertain to holding police accountable and bringing about real transparency is going to be met by him in opposition. So we have to really consider his position on this board and I'm gonna take a look at the bylaws to see how he got on the board anyway. What I'm really concerned about too is how the Citizen Oversight Committee can assist us maybe tomorrow, well, I'm calling for a press conference tomorrow with the families that's been impacted by police violence by BART, to be at the BART, uh, board meeting location for a press conference in response to those racist statements. I, um, is asking for your support and even your suggestions because that's not the first time Deborah Allen has attacked our family, the Oscar Grant family. In November, she put a racist post up and had all the white folks all across this country attacking us as a family. Now, she makes the statement that she did last week concerning the police don't murder folk. And yet you heard Ms. Yolanda Banks read, talk about Shaleen Tindall. You hear us talking about Oscar Grant. You hear Dina Labello talking about Nate Greer. It's been at least fourteen to fifteen people since the existence of BART that has been murdered by the BART Police Department. And so for us to even have that argument concerning taking the word out, it is my position, my perception, and I'm sure it's the board's per- the Oversight Committee's perception that what we seen happen to George Floyd was murder. And none of us should be arguing about whether we should water it down and say it was just a killing. It was flat-out murder and I'm appalled at this Bruno character for even being on our committee. And matter of fact, we gotta do some work to stay about getting him removed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that public comment. Um, my next, um, my next person to comment is area code four one five. And the last three digits are three one two seven. Three one two seven. Four one five, uh, three one two seven. Okay. Um, we'll come back. Uh, let's see, the next person is five one zero. Um, uh, the last four digits are seven five five eight. Seven five five eight, five one oh, seven five five eight. Seven five five eight. Nope. Okay, area code five one zero nine, no, seven five five eight is unmuted. Go ahead.
Seven five five eight was Uncle Bobby.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, uncle.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm kinda angry, so I don't need to speak no more.
Right, I hear that. The next person on the list is five one zero ninety-three hundred are the last four digits, nine three zero zero. Star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Wanda Johnson, the mother of Oscar Grant, who was killed January first, two thousand and nine. And I say the word killed. He was murdered. Um, I'm appalled at two things. One, first is Deborah Allen, the comments that was made on the news. Um, that is our problem today is that we do not want to accept responsibility. Okay? Um, we do not want to call murder, murder. George Floyd was murdered and that's how it should be in the record and that should not change. It should not be watered down. We cannot continue to try not to accept responsibility. If a person is murdered, that's what it should be called. Now, if it was someone else doing the killing, we wouldn't have a problem saying it was murder. But when it comes to the police officers, we have a problem saying that a person is murdered. And so I want to say publicly that, um, whatever we can do to get Deborah Allen off the board, she needs to be off the board. You cannot continue to have racist people on your board, um, be an example or setting an example for BART. Because this is the second time or a third time that she has done the very thing that she did on the news. There is a concern for justice in our world today. However, to achieve justice for the world, we must understand God's views. We must understand that God will judge injustice and wrong. And so when it's wrong is wrong. And it's very wrong to try to change the narrative and to make people think that a person wasn't murdered when in fact they were murdered. The last thing that I want to say is that these meetings, they must continue, but you must listen to what the people are saying and take action on that. The defunding of the funds for BART can go to the housing projects. They can go to the jobs. They can go to, uh, community services. Because in order for us to continue the way that we're continuing to try to deny that African-American or black people are being killed at a high, uh, a lesser rate or, uh, tend to, I forgot what he said, but trying to give the statistics that white people are killed, but look at it. Black people are killed, are killed at a higher rate by police officers. And this has to change. We have to change that narrative by holding officers accountable for their actions. And when they have a complaint against them, that those complaints are acted upon and that you just don't let them build up. If you allow them to build up, you will see the same case that happened, was happening with, uh, George Floyd killing the police officer who's had all those complaints and nothing was done, nothing was done. And he's, and George is dead today. I encourage you to look at the complaints and action be taken against those complaints when they are filed against the police officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda, for that comment. Um, the next, the next person on my list is five one zero, uh, three zero three two. Three zero three two. Five one zero, last four digits are three zero three two. Star six to unmute yourself. It looks like you're unmuted. I don't hear a comment. Okay, the next person on the list is five one zero. Uh, the, the last four digits are eight one one one. Eight one one one. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Sidia Garrett, um, former, um, chairperson of this committee. I just, um, commend you as a board on making the statement and keeping the word murdering because that's what it was. I also just want to mention, I was also offended by the comments made by a few of the board members. And I encourage you, if you want to be a part of what this board was meant to do, the work that it was chartered to do, you need to really educate yourself on what's really happening in this world. If George Floyd's murder was the first instance of you understanding that this is a real problem, you really need to do your research and there's a lot of information out there that you can find. Um, I also want to encourage this board to look at the interaction. The interaction that is happening, just like board member Gomez mentioned, the interaction that's happening with people who are being stopped by the police. Are these stops necessary? Are there other resources that should be put there? Really look at what's going on because it's the interaction is where things go wrong and because people are being stopped unnecessarily or aggravated unnecessarily. So, um, that is all I have to say. Again, I commend you for having these conversations and moving the work forward. Continue to allow, um, this board hopefully sets the bar high for other organizations across the country because change needs to happen, radical change. And I yield any time that might be available to Ms. Johnson or to Uncle Bobby. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidia. Um, we will circle back at the end and ask for-
This is Uncle Bobby. Can I get that, the rest of that time?
You can, you can.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I want the board, our, our, our Citizen Oversight Board to begin to really investigate A B seventy-one with the use of force data collection, making sure that our BART agency, our BART Police Agency is reporting to the Department of Justice, California Department of Justice, um, the use of force that's been used. Also, the Racial Profiling Act or A B nine fifty-three, which is the Racial Identification Profiling Act. Also, the Racial Profiling Act, or AB nine fifty-three, which is the Racial Identification Profiling Act, making sure that BART is supplying that information again to the, uh, according to the law that's been passed. Um, you know, AB seven forty-eight, which is the video audio release. We definitely want to make sure that BART is honoring these pieces of legislation that we fought so hard to get passed. AB fourteen twenty-one, which really let us know just how the BART Policing Agency did hide the information behind Johannes, Johannes Mansley, when he had, um, complaints filed against him, and they claimed they didn't have any. And then we find out in twenty nineteen that he had six before he murdered Oscar Grant, all documented. And we need to really make sure that BART honors AB three ninety-two, which is the California Act to Save Lives. These are legislation that has been voted on, or should have been signed into law by our state governor, and that we need to make sure that our policing agency, BART specifically, is held accountable to those legislation. And so that we can really, uh, be the forerunner, or the for leader, in a organization that has taken heed to what the people want, what the legislators have passed, what has been signed into law. You know, and so Bruno needs to go look at AB seventy-one, use of force data collection, and make sure that his, his comrades are reporting to the Department of Justice.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll go ahead and end there, but I needed that to say that.
That, that's okay. Thank you for that public comment. Um. The next speaker is five one zero, area code five one zero, and the last four digits are nineteen twenty-eight. Nineteen twenty-eight, and you can press star six to unmute yourself if you have a public comment. Five one zero, last four digits are nineteen twenty-eight. Okay, um, the next person on the list is, um, five one zero, or sorry, six five oh, uh, four four two one, area code six five zero, four four two one, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Simona Manganelli, I'm a resident of San Francisco and a frequent BART writer. Um, I've been listening to a lot of the comments, uh, here on this board and the public comments, and I've also been listening and participating in public comments on other police agencies, with the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco, the, um, School District of San Francisco. And one thing that public commentators all have in common, hundred percent of the callers, it's very striking, is that not a single one of them feels safe when police are around, not a single one. It's, it's, it's unconscionable that BART continues to fund, to the degree of ninety-one million dollars, um, to put black and brown people on the BART system in danger. Uh, it's just gross. And you see this manifesting itself with Zachary Bruno's completely racist comments. And, uh, BART Director Deborah Allen, I like to call her Karen Allen, uh, her completely racist comments at the last, uh, uh, Board of Directors meeting. And it, it really makes me question whether this board is actually going to do anything, or the Board of Directors is really gonna do anything of BART if these people are on the boards here. So, I just want to say that, um, not a single pe- not a single person feels, you know, safe with police around. And so I am calling for the defun, defunding, the disbanding, and the abolishment of BART Police, because the ninety-one million dollars can go to so much better things. And by the way, those double tall murder fair gates as well, those ones that are gonna cost fifteen to twenty-five million dollars per year over the next four years, those are also just designed to put black and brown people in harm's way. And that money can be better spent elsewhere as well. So, in conclusion, abolish the police and fuck the racist people on these boards. Thanks so much.
Thank you for that public comment. Um, the next person on the list is, um, area code, uh, four one five nine nine two three one two seven. Go ahead, four one five, go ahead. Or three one two seven. Star six to unmute yourself. Uh, not hearing anybody. Are you there?
David?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, good, that worked. Uh, hi, yes, thanks. Um, so this is Ben Douglas, I'm a, also a former member and Chair of the Board. Uh, and I just want to first say to the members of the Board, I, I can appreciate from experience, this is a very difficult, um, place to be, because these issues are complicated, and obviously, people are understandably very upset. Uh, and I, on a personal level, I share that, it was just horrific watching, watching what happened to George Floyd. Um, it, uh, it was very emotional for me, and I can only imagine what it's like for people, um, in his, his direct community. Um, I would say, um, when you're thinking about this, and I speak from experience being on the Board, that as much as the problem, a lot of the problem, um, im- immediately comes from the police, they're also gonna have to be part of the solution. Um, I think just getting rid of police, not having some kind of law enforcement agency, uh, in BART is just not realistic. There, there is a need to have them there. Uh, however, and I say this, having, you know, spoken to people who are, who've had problems with the police, as well as officers themselves, I think, uh, solutions like decreasing the amount of interaction that police have with the public, um, and pairing it back to only when it's really necessary to have somebody with a gun, uh, in a club, interacting, uh, would be great. Uh, it would be, would reduce the chances for unpleasant and often violent interactions. And frankly, I think the police officers themselves, um, and it said to me, when I talked to them about this, would welcome it. They don't like being put in that position of having to be sort of in forces of social norms, um, or even mi- minor rule violations, like food and noise, sleeping on the train, things like that, that are much better handled by non-sworn personnel, and often, as people have pointed out, social workers who can really try to, uh, really assist people who often are really hurting and need, need assistance from a social worker, uh, rather than, uh, intervention from a police officer. Um, as I said, these are, these are really complicated issues, and, um, I think, I just encourage everyone to maybe not, not ignore all the emotions involved, but, um, balance those with the need to find constructive solutions that are gonna need to bring all of the different, uh, parties, uh, in, and help, have them be part of crafting, um, a better way to, to keep people safe and secure on BART. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for that public comment. Um, the next number on the list is area code six five zero, and the last four digits are nine six four three. Nine six four three, and you can press star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is Isaac, I live in San Jose, uh, next to Newberry Air Station. And it's the first time that I attend one of those meetings. I, I didn't know anyone in the Board, and I must say I was appalled at the comments by Zachary Bruno. First at the insistence to remove the word murder, when that's what best describes what happened there. Uh, second at the racist comments with like, statistics that are manipulated to make it sound like white people were more targeted by police, which is not the case. Uh, yeah, I'm, as the Uncle Bobby said, I think it's just like, not fair that this person is part of the Board and has those comments to say. Uh, I am supportive of general defunding BART Police, although I'm not a frequent rider, because the Board has made it here. But from my experience so far, it doesn't seem like they do a good job at ensuring that anyone is safe, especially black and brown people. Um, I was very moved by the words of both Uncle Bobby and, uh, Oscar Grant's, uh, mom, and I was appalled too at the comments by Deborah Allen, uh, last week. Um, I agree with them, right, that, that as long as these people are in the Board of Directors of BART, uh, it's hard to make progress. Uh, on the other hand, I was, I'm very thankful to everyone in this Board that pushed for the, uh, keeping the murder, uh, wording in the statement. I'm very grateful to Janice Lee for, uh, her strong support for, um, reform or defending the BART Police and keeping all those options open. And I hope that we can find, uh, a way to basically move, uh, funding from BART Police to, uh, other options, like making BART more affordable, uh, having like, uh, mental health assistance for anyone who seems to have any distress at BART and so on, right? Uh, uh, that's, that's it, thank you. What the-
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Um, the next person on my list is area code seven one four, and the last four digits are three one four zero. Three one four zero, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jim Tingle. Uh, as a citizen of San Francisco, I'd like to strongly urge the BART to reevaluate its budgetary priorities going forward, with an eye towards reallocating funds currently spent on BART PD to programs and services that allow BART to achieve its goals without the armed threat of force. There's growing awareness in the community and nation that we have given police officers far too broad a mandate and responsibilities, and that using armed officers to perform duties that could be satisfied by unarmed, specialized civilian personnel has contributed to a huge amount of unnecessary suffering, and is an ineffective and inefficient use of resources. I urge BART to look to other agencies nationally and internationally for how we might maximally make use of civilian personnel for policy enforcement, particularly for questions of fair evasion and so-called quality of life questions that have such clear alternatives in the transit world. Thank you. I emailed this comment as well, but this statement should supersede that.
Thank you. Um, and on that note, we received some written comments today that have been forwarded to the Board, they'll be posted on, um, on the website. Um, all right, the next person that I see on my list is area code seven one four, and the last four digits are five five seven nine. Seven one four, go ahead. Five five seven nine, I see that you've unmuted yourself, but we can't hear you. Five five seven nine, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have my local mute on. Uh, hi, my name is Peter, and I live in District Nine. And on the discussion earlier of whether or not to say murder, let's be clear, this is about presumption of innocence. Every person killed by cops was innocent, every single one. Whatever the police or media may accuse that person of after their death, that person was innocent, because they had not been proven guilty. And a prior conviction doesn't count, prior guilt doesn't carry forward to future encounters. In that moment of an encounter with a cop, they are at the very start of the criminal justice process. They are, at that moment, innocent. So we're talking about police killing innocent people. We're talking about police taking on the roles of judge, jury, and executioner. You can have an opinion on the death penalty, but it doesn't become relevant until the end of the criminal justice process. A person killed by a cop hasn't been sentenced by that process, they've been sentenced by one cop and any cops who stand around and watch. As another commenter said, if you aren't on the jury, you can fairly describe a cop unilaterally depriving an innocent person of due process and killing that innocent person on the spot as a murder. Lastly, BART does not need a police department. Every area served by BART already has a police department that BART can call upon for life-threatening emergencies. Please abolish the BART PD. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment. Um, the next caller is area code seven one six, and the last three digits are one five three three. One five three three, seven one six, um, you can press star six to unmute yourself, go ahead.
That's just me, this is Jenna, that's just me, I'm still online listening, so.
Thank you.
All I'll say is like, I've been, I've been listening to every single comment, and if you're still online, I thank you so much for calling in. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, the next person on the list is area code seven three two, and the last, uh, four digits are six four eight eight. Six four eight eight. Go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's Anna, and, um, I used to live in San Francisco and ride the BART all the time, and now I live in Emeryville, and of course, before the coronavirus hit, I would ride the BART all the time. And as a white woman, I can tell you that I don't really see what the BART Police do, other than just harass people without cause. Um, I myself was in an encounter at West Oakland Station, which is my home station, where the police were right there, and they didn't do anything. Um, so, based on the comments before and what I've been hearing here, it seems like their only function is to threaten people, harass people, and kill people, uh, which I don't want my taxes going to, and I certainly don't want to pay BART for that. Um, I think the BART Police should be defunded. Based on Mr. Bruno's comments and Director Allen's comments in the previous meeting of the, uh, BART Board of Directors, I'm becoming very convinced that the BART Police cannot be reformed. Their own representative on this Board comes in with racist excuses and, uh, refuses to acknowledge that what happened to George Floyd was murder. Uh, it makes me wonder what he thinks about the murders that happened, uh, on the BART, really. Uh, so, because I believe they cannot be reformed, I believe the money should not be going to the BART Police. Use that money to make the BART free, improve the BART's function, add more stations, or take that money and give it to the communities that are being traumatized and underserved, because we're spending all this money essentially enabling a terrorist force. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you for that public comment, all right, we have another one for area code nine two five two seven eight zero. Two seven eight zero, please unmute yourself if you want to make a comment, star six. Nine two five two seven eight zero, press star six to unmute yourself. Um, okay, we don't have one from them. Um, there is a new number that came up, uh, area code five one eight. Uh, last four digits are five seven nine three. Five seven nine three, area code five one eight, if you want to make a public comment, pre- please press star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rachel, I'm a San Francisco resident and BART writer, and I am commenting to say that I would like to see the BART Police defunded, and that other agencies and services can better, uh, do with their day. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, I've been through the list once, we may have had new additions, so I'm just gonna open it up. Um, if I haven't called on you or recently dialed in, um, can you unmute yourself by, by, um, by pressing star six, and then we'll go through you. Let's start with area code four one five, and the last-
This is the actress.
The last four digits are three eight eight nine.
Eight one, eight seven.
Okay, hold on, we'll get to all of you, just leave yourselves unmute, let's start with three eight eight nine.
Hi, my name is Emma, I'm, uh, under normal circumstances, I'm a, a daily BART commuter. Um, I wanted to call in and say that I think, uh, the, uh, Citizen Review Board exists to, uh, place a check on the power of BART Police, and it is so clear at this point that the only appropriate check that exists on the power of BART Police is for them not to, not to exist. I share what everyone else has said, I have never seen a situation in which BART Police's presence has made me feel safer, and it's not like I've never been in the scary situation on BART, and the only thing that having an armed cop come onto the train has ever made me do is be terrified for the safety of the other person, or even my own. And I, I, I asked that the, the, the Board strongly recommend defunding the BART Police, which seems like, uh, the, the only thing that could sensibly be done with this money, and, and put it, put it into things that will actually make the community safe. Um, and I, uh, appreciate, uh, you hearing me out.
Thank you. All right, it looks like, um, area code five one zero, last four digits, eight one seven, you're on the line?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
This is, this is the actress X, uh, uh, part of the Justice for Oscar Grant movement, as well as I was part of, uh, helping put the Commission together, along with Minister Sabore and Brother Reggie Lau. We were at all those meetings, fighting to get what the Board, together. And, um, also married to Uncle Bobby, so, I'm calling in to express- My, um- My um disdain for the remarks as well as for BART, period. Because BART, when something happens on BART, they never take responsibility, even though they put out campaigns like they are. The way they treat the Neoweson family, deplorable. Uh, Shaleen Tyndall's family, deplorable. You know, they have to fight for what should already be already taken care of and BART should take responsibility for. So I just wanted to come on and say that and I also wanted to say that I don't remember and I do remember us fighting that police should not be on the commission. So now we're gonna have to go back and look into that. And I, I would ask the uh commission if, if you know today if that's a fact. Because I believe that one of the things was that police officers would not be on the commission. And if I have any time, I'll concede it to Oscar's mother if she so wants.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any other speakers who haven't spoken yet who want to make a public comment? If you're on the line and you want to make a public comment, please dial star six and um we're ready for you.
Alright, hi, my name is Jamie. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Jamie and I am a fifteen-year resident uh of San Francisco. Um, I'd just like to echo what a lot of other people are saying here where um e- every time in my fifteen years of riding the BART, I have not felt safe at any time for myself or the other passengers uh when BART police are around. I've never seen them do anything helpful for people. They not only, you know, have a history of murdering people, but they also harass people for eating sandwiches. It's like the biggest to the smallest of things that they're uh, you know, not helping instead of helping for. Um, I agree with the other callers that we don't need multiple police stations. I'm personally in favor of abolishing all police and putting that money into more useful social safety services. Um, but at the very least, I do think defunding and disbanding the BART police would be the most uh reasonable and sensible course of action to take. Um, and I'd also just like to say that um I have. You know, uh, to the families of Oscar Grant and Shaleen Tyndall, uh, I just send prayers out to you. And uh I'm thankful that you were able to have your voices be heard today. Um, I yield the rest of my time to Oscar Grant's family or Shaleen Tyndall's family. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna open it up again. Um, if you're on the line and you haven't spoken yet um or you've had time seated to you and you want to speak again, please press star six and we'll hear from you.
Hi, this is Wanda Johnson again, the mother of Oscar Grant. I have proposed before to be able to go into the BART police station and the foundation do some sensitivity training, some culture training, and some bias training. And I'm still um offering that same thing because right now it looks like we're not going to um abolish the police there. So the foundation wants to go in and offer the training because there is too. There is too many um racial discrimination going on with the BART of who they are um policing. Um, and it's mostly men and women of color and so it has to change. And so the offer to go in and begin some racism training and some sensitivity training is what we are proposing.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I have any other public comment? Anybody who hasn't been heard from yet, please press star six and we'll hear from you. Otherwise, we're gonna move to the next agenda item. Alright, um, not hearing any. Um, we're gonna move to the next item, which is. Um, proposed reforms um that CRB could develop um along with input from other um folks. Um, including OIPA. Um, I want to say since I haven't spoken much yet, um, I want to say a few things and then I'd like to hear from OIPA and from the chief. Um, and after, I'd like to hear more from other members. Um, so I think that BART PD has um made a lot of progress in the collaborative reform process. I'm grateful that it has been um largely a collaborative and cooperative process since two thousand nine. And I think that um the department has made lots of improvements over the years and has implemented many of the, many of the um reforms that are being discussed nationally now as best practices were changed that, that thankfully BART made several years ago. Um, my favorite example, as many of you know, is the use of force policy, which we revised um aggressively in two thousand and seventeen. We were ahead of the curve and we saw approximately thirty percent decrease in the use of force um within that period afterwards. Um, and it was, it was fairly, fairly stark. Um, we have, we, so we have, there are achievements here. However, um, we still have so much work to be done. I think that's incredibly clear from the public comment today. I think it's clear from statistics that this board has been aware of for quite a while and, and we need to take accountability for that. Um, one of the things that we changed with the use of force policy is use of force reporting. And um a- at the board's request, the BART Police Department provided information about race and age in the use of force. And in twenty eighteen, which is the last report that we have available, the department's working on the twenty nineteen report. Sixty percent of all force that was deployed by, deployed by BART police officers was deployed against African-Americans. And fifty percent, fifty percent of the force that was used by BART police in twenty eighteen um was directed at black men. Um, according to, you know, the twenty eighteen ridership survey, only ten percent of our ridership is African-American. So disparities are very stark. Um, they continue. Um, we saw the same thing uh earlier this year uh around um eating and drinking, right? Um, eighty percent of those citations in the public records requests made by the examiner. Um, eighty percent of those citations for, for minor quality of life things were directed at African-Americans. I'm particularly concerned about young people of color. Um, I think that they are um, that, that the, the burden and the, the cost of um of improper policing falls on young people of color. When I was at the Black Lives Matter protest, it was overwhelmingly in San Francisco, my constituents, it was overwhelmingly young people of color. The twenty eighteen use of force report, um, the annual report uh shows that over thirty percent of force used by BART police was directed at people aged twenty-four or under. Um, that really concerns me. So I am highly receptive to the calls um that we've heard nationally, locally today. Um, to limit the scope of policing duties, I think we need to do thoughtfully so, but we need to do so urgently. I think it is ultimately the, the responsibility of the Board of Directors to make these changes. And I'm sure that um they will look um in turn to BART PD and to the general manager for assistance. And I think that the, the CRB, um, it, it's incumbent upon us to elicit these public comments and to lend our own expertise. But I want to make clear for everybody on the phone that we don't have the power to, to, to defund or abolish um BART PD. We're an advisory board. Um, a few other things that I think I, I, I want to say are um, we have about four hundred fair evasion contacts per month. Fair evasion, um, whether you have a two dollar or a five dollar ticket is not a law enforcement matter in my perspective. And I think public, public opinion about that has changed. Yes, there are some people who disagree. There's some written comments we received to that effect, to that effect. But I don't think um my constituents in San Francisco believe that fair evasion is a policing matter. It's not a law enforcement at, matter for somebody with a gun, a sworn officer. It's something for at most train conductor. Um, and I, and I have real concern and have long had concerns about fair evasion in policing at BART. Um, and I'll tell you why. Because this board has repeatedly seen um disciplinary cases where we receive a complaint of somebody um that says that they were um the, the subject of biased policing or discrimination at the, at the department. And often we will see the videos and the video will show a police officer stopping a young person of color, a minor, and asking them for a ticket. And the kid um i- you know, out of youth uh walks away or tries to push past the officer. And the officer then has been trained to um to intervene because they feel they've offered, they've issued a lawful order. And if they don't intervene, um, you know, the, the lawlessness will abide. Um, and so they grab that kid or if the, the child runs, you know, they, they bring them down. That's a scenario that keeps me up at night and it's um, it's a scenario that killed George Floyd. He died over a twenty dollar counterfeit ticket, um counterfeit bill. And I don't want um, I don't want somebody, I don't want a single more person, a single other kid um to be traumatized um by use of force or an unnecessary interaction with law enforcement over a fair, over a fair. Um, and I think beyond that, um, what you're hearing from the community today is that it's not enough to simply end police involvement in fair evasion. Um, there's a bigger, a bigger movement at play um behind Black Lives Matter and behind the protests that we've seen. Um, we need to think about not just um pulling back on fair evasion, but we need to think about fair forgiveness and fair reductions for people who are poor. The rea- a quarter of riders on, on a quarter, twenty-five percent of our riders fall below the poverty line. And the, the kids of color who are getting stopped and don't have tickets, most of them can't afford it. It's a poverty issue. It's not a policing issue in my view. Um, I, I agree with other people who've spoken that we need to decriminalize homelessness. This is a major issue for San Francisco, which I represent. Again, it's not a law enforcement issue. Sleeping and eating and drinking on the trains or the platforms is not a law enforcement issue. It's a public health issue. Um, we're entering a, a significant depression, an economic depression at this time. Um, and BART stations and trains offer shelter to people of all races. Black men, white runaway kids, these are my constituents and we have to stop treating them like the subject of law enforcement. Finally, um, I would also say, and I, and I would note that um these types of reforms, which I think it is incumbent for us to develop and, and the Board of um Directors to seriously consider and to endorse looking into them. These are types, these types of reforms are, are gonna happen. They, they already have support from places like San Francisco where the mayor, the Board of Supervisors, the police chief, and even the Police Officers Association all support these types of reforms. So they're going to happen around us and we need to embrace them. BART has, so far, has embraced um reforms and we, and we need to remain um ahead of the curve, I think. Finally, I would just want to say, um, I also think we need that, you know, that it, and I agree with um Janice Lee, what she said, which is um, the policing system and the criminal justice system is a racist system. It's a racist institution. That's not an accusation against individual officers or, or this department specifically. It's a racist institution and a racist society. And our ra- our riders are also racist um and, and we should acknowledge that. And for a long time, I've been concerned about calls for service from riders against um, for matters that are not police matters at all. Whether it's um uh, you know, being disruptive, a lot of our riders seem to think that it's a crime to be a person, a young person of color uh and playing loud music on the train. That has got to end and I would like to see a public service campaign from BART address the ridership about um, about to, to end these abusive calls for service against people of color. I also think that oversight should be strengthened. Um, and I want to push the board. I think that this next item, which is an action item, um, I think we should um. I think we should move the ball forward by proposing a number of items that we think um that the Board of Directors should endorse and, and embrace um and offer our assistance in um addressing these issues. And from my perspective, they would include um reexamining fair evasion and whether it should be depoliced. Um, examining generally uh the types of crimes that BPD um charges. Um, the vast majority of which are misdemeanor and citations rather than core public safety felonies. Um, I would say that we need to look at homelessness and I support the calls for um diverting funds to a homeless outreach team um to address uh homelessness in our stations. And I also believe that we should strengthen oversight here at BART. Um, BART oversight, civilian independent oversight has been incredibly important. Um, this is a volunteer board. Uh, we have zero staff. We have Mag Tatum from the Secretary's Office to assist noticing meetings. But we don't have a policy analyst. We don't have an investigator. We don't have a lawyer. Um, we rely on OIPA and OIPA is a, a great agency and um had, and I rely on them all the time. But they're a three-person agency and this is not a volunteer three-person um undertaking. And it shouldn't be a fraction of a percent of the police department's budget that's spent on oversight. So um with that, uh, I'd like to invite um Russell Bloom to make comments if he wants to. And then I'd like to ask the chief to um speak since he's heard a lot and then I'd like to open it up to the board. Russell, do you want to speak?
Thank you, David. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
I apologize. I am taking this meeting in my car because I have a power outage going on in my house. So I'm a little out of sorts, but thank you, of course, uh, David and, and CRB members for putting together this, this opportunity for, for us to all listen. Um, you know, I absolutely approach the work that we do um with the recognition that the important work that we do includes listening to the voices of people who are impacted by policing. And so this has been a, a good opportunity for me to do that. Uh, a lot of what you are saying, David, um, if I could just address those sort of big picture reform issues. Uh, it's my belief that the country is in a place right now where uh these conversations are going to be had and they're um very nuanced and very detailed. Um, I don't think uh an answer can be as simple as removing or eliminating policing from a community or a district like ours. Um, I think it does warrant conversation to look at whether and how the scope of policing in BART um may be adjusted. Um, but what's, uh, I have to sort of stay in my own lane on this one. Uh, I'm very interested in hearing those conversations, participating in them, um, and learning more about what people want to see in the future. In the meantime, uh, I am committed to continuing to do the work that we do in my agency. Um, and just to remind folks, you know, we do thorough independent investigations of complaints. Those complaints may be regarding any type of allegation. And I do want to elevate that part of the conversation we're hearing nationally um does uh talk about the importance of independent oversight and independent investigations. In some of those conversations, the conversation's limited to independent investigation of in custody deaths or murders or killings. Um, I really want to point out the importance of the investigations that we do into different types of misconduct allegations, which really help us understand um whether there are systemic issues, uh whether there are training issues, whether there are issues with an individual officer's understanding of policy or the law. Um, and so in your capacity as um police oversight volunteers, I encourage you to, to um express the need for independent investigations into all types of misconduct. Um, that said, we are positioned to continue to do the work that we're doing. We are um open to having the conversations uh at every level regarding what policing looks like. I do want to acknowledge that the general manager, deputy general manager, and, and other executive staff at BART are very engaged, uh have made a commitment to uh really rolling up our sleeves and. to really rolling up our sleeves and looking at what types of changes or adjustments might be appropriate for the district. But nobody is resting on our laurels. Although I agree that we've done some very important work in the last 10 years. The context in which we've done that work is not one in which most of the nation recognized that there were systemic issues, cultural issues that made it hard to do some of the nuts and bolts work. But with appropriate collaboration and dedication, we've made some great changes. Now that the climate has changed, I think it's appropriate for us to have bigger conversations. And I am really, I want to put out there that I'm interested in hearing more from the unions about whether any kind of adjustment to the scope of policing is something that they would want to see. If so, why? If not, why not? I've gone on too long, but I'm also available to answer any questions that anybody might have about the work that we're doing. I want to close by saying that I think the model that we have in place here at BART is among the strongest in the nation. And I hope that over time, people will look to us to help understand what works, what's effective and what may need adjusting over time. But that doesn't mean that our model is perfect. And I look forward to any tinkering we can do to improve my performance and the performance of the police department going forward. Thank you all for your time and dedication to this.
Thank you, Russell. Chief Alvarez, I want to open the floor for you. I appreciate your patience. Obviously, this is a public meeting for you to hear from the public, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, good evening. So yeah, I'd been listening to a lot of good dialogue, a lot of good comments. Yeah, and I'll be the first to admit, as the chief of police, we're not perfect. I don't think there's any police department that could make the claim that they're perfect. But I'd tell you what we are willing to do and that's, that's listen and continue to improve. Until we get to that benchmark where we could say that we are perfect, if and when that day comes, we're gonna work. We're gonna continue to work. We're gonna listen to our riders. We're gonna listen to our community. You know, we, we have a lot of things that I think have to be discussed. I think we got a good foundation. There's a lot of discussion that still needs to be had with the CRB, with our Board of Directors, our general manager, deputy general manager, all the way down and through the OIPA and with our unions. But I think right now, that discussion is being had. We're doing a lot of good things to help improve and open ourselves up to those changes with training, with, with dialogue, just a lot of different things. And I get it, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not closing my ears to anything that's going on out there. I'm a, I'm a news buff. I like to stay in tune to what's going on just for, for my edification and my situational awareness so that I understand and maybe I can learn something from somebody that's doing something good or great that I could bring to the BART Police Department. My, my, my number one mission is to make this system safe and, and to do it lawfully and, and do it through treating people with respect and dignity. I, I, I expect that of myself. I expect that of my officers. And I think that's something that we still gotta continue to work on. But again, I think it's all done through discussion with respect for each other's profession, with each other's work. Everybody has a different perspective on how we could do better and how we do policing today in 2020. So, you know, I was just as disgusted as anybody else who saw the video of George Floyd. You know, myself and OIPA came out with the statement on the 29th condemning that killing. It wasn't nothing that I think any police department and any officer that puts on his uniform and swears to protect and serve will say, God, I, I'm okay with that. No, that was disgusting to the core. I will say that here. I've said that before and I will continue to say it. What happened to George Floyd was disgusting. It shouldn't ever happen. But again, I think right now, the main focus for us locally at the BART Police Department is to continue to work and continue to put in that effort to continue to make this place better for everybody. So again, I apply the dialogue, everybody's time. You know, it's two and a half hours worth of good information, stuff that, you know, my ears are open to and, you know, I'm open to discussions and making changes. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, chief. All right, other members of the board, does anyone want to say something more, react to some of the things that we heard?
Chair, if I can jump in. Just briefly, I don't want to take up too, too much time. But I did want to echo your earlier call around rethinking the way that we police fair evasion specifically. I know that's something that we've had great discussions about on the CRB and about how that's done and what the results of that are. But not just fair evasion, also homelessness. I think that there are ways to rethink our approach that are more holistic, that are less punitive, less forceful, less violent, that could have a better outcome. So I think on the rethinking side, I want to echo those and lift them up. I also wanted to just briefly put in one thing that, that sort of sat with me since I joined the board is around the discipline schedule for officers who have been found to violate policy. I may, I'm just saying off my head, so I may not be 100% accurate, but I believe there are 11 steps in that sequential discipline. And that's just too many. If I'm being detained by BART police, I don't get 11 steps to do it, you know, I get, I get one. And I, you know, I'm, I'm all about making sure that, you know, we're not just throwing the baby out with the bathwater. But at the same time, I think one of the things that we've learned over and over through the tragic and needless murder of so many unarmed people of color in this country is that there are warning signs many times. There are complaints that have been there ahead of time. And oftentimes, it's, it's not a surprise that something like this happens. So I want to look more deeply at ways to hold those quote unquote "bad apples" to account. You know, if I bite into an apple and it's bad, I don't bite 11 more times wondering if it's really bad. So maybe we can look at that.
Thank you. Do we have other, other members who want to comment on what we've heard or how to move forward? Pete, Pete Longmire, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So Dave, thank you for spearheading, chairing this, this conversation. It's definitely meaningful. I am not surprised by some of the comments that our callers express. I'm not surprised by some of my board colleagues have expressed about, you know, growing up in the South and witnessing the change as going back to 1960. I have to tell you, for those who don't know, like some of the callers on the phone, I'm African-American. I didn't grow up with privilege. I've had my, you know, fair share of interaction with law enforcement as, as a young guy. I, you know, have over 21 years of law enforcement experience as an officer. I've investigated law enforcement agencies as a private investigator. I, I have a political background. And I know that law enforcement has come a long way. There has been some gains. But as we know, over the years, especially people of color, we really don't see the gains the same way that people of non-color, white people, see the change. We see it in a whole different way. Unless you're on the other side of the badge and have an interaction with a law enforcement officer who does not know that you're a former law enforcement officer, you know, you get treated a particular way. And it doesn't feel good. And so seeing what's happening across the nation, seeing what's happening right here in our own, you know, backyard, it's extremely painful. It's extremely scary. Anytime that I have to sit down with one of my 17 grandchildren and have a conversation with them as to not, as to how to not get shot by law enforcement, that's very painful. It's very scary. Me at, going on 64 years old, when I get in my car and I drive and there's a law enforcement officer behind me, I shouldn't be concerned. I shouldn't be afraid. But yet I feel like I am. When I get stopped and have a conversation, I get nervous. Why do I get nervous? I mean, I probably have more time in, in law enforcement than, you know, some of these youngsters have been living. So I really shouldn't be afraid. So we have, we have a lot to do. We have to listen. We have to change. We can't get caught up in the minutia of long and years of conversations to make these changes. These things are happening now. And whatever we can do as a, as an advisory board, you know, I'm all in for it. And what I want to really say is that things are continuing to happen. I am, I am even more disappointed with, in light of all the shootings that are going on. These shootings are still continuing. So law enforcement, some people in law enforcement aren't getting the message. I think one of the callers say, Ms. Johnson, she was talking about offering training to, you know, BART Police Department. So I'm a person of training. I don't believe that we can ever get enough training. But changes have to be made. They have to be made now. The shooting has to stop. The disrespect of people who are less fortunate, that are not privileged, has to stop. And we need to figure this out at a very quick pace or I think nothing good could ever come of this conversation. So I've spoken to the chief, our BART chief. I believe that he's sincere. I would like to see BART to continue to be ahead of the curve. I would like to see that the officers are held more accountable because that's, that's what they sign up for. The job is not easy. It's never going to be easy. And in today's times, there is, there is a tight rope. There is a tight rope that has to be walked. And those officers who resign out of protest, I'd say farewell, good riddance. Because there's other youngsters that are coming in behind them that understand, that came from the community, that will do the job, that get it. The job of law enforcement isn't to shoot first and ask questions later. You win some and you lose some. But what happened on Friday night was absolutely appalling. What happened to Mr. Floyd, absolutely appalling. And it's very painful to watch. So just like a fellow board member White was saying, it's, it's very scary. It's very, very painful. And he's very outspoken about it. I concur with him, you know, 100%. Both of the Whites. And I want to thank those who have not experienced these type of things that black people and people of color have experienced, that their eyes are open, that they're listening and that they're willing to get involved. Because in my mind, that's what it's going to take to make systemic changes and to teach people and to weed out the bad ones and keep the ones that, that are, the officers that are behind more trained and better informed and more sensitive. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me a little, a little soapbox there.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. William White, did you want to comment? William White, you're muted.
Yes, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. I'd like to just finish by saying, you know, I've been doing police oversight since 1996. And it, it never amazes me that knowing the problems within the policing system, it always takes a tragedy such as this to get the public riled up enough to come to, to come to us and voice their concerns. I just want to put it out there that, again, I've been doing this since 1996. I represent District Three, Rebecca Saltman's district. I am here for you guys. I want to hear from you guys, not after a situation such as, but before, to be proactive. I want you to go on the website and, and look up my number. My, my email is WCWYTE@yahoo.com for those who live in District Three, which is Berkeley, Albany and some of Richmond. And give me your ideas and so I can bring them into our meetings. Again, I hate to see this type of participation after a tragedy. I like to see it before the tragedy, a tragedy. So we can make the changes before something like this happens. Again, if every single municipality in this great United States has a citizen review board, I'm quite sure it will impact the way policing is done in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. It's about 10 to 7. The meeting's been going on for almost three hours. I think I'm, I'm glad that we have heard from the public and from members of the board and the Board of Directors. And in thinking about next steps, I, I think that in some respects, in my view, the onus is on the Board of Directors to express support for these ideas, but we should continue to carry them forward. So what I would propose to do is the Board of Directors will be meeting on the 25th. I understand they'll be discussing this issue and the general manager is working on a, and, and the police chief and others are working on a resolution or a statement about the situation. And so what I would like to do is to signal where CRB is to the Board of Directors. And then we will reconvene shortly, perhaps before our next regular meeting to, to talk more about what the next steps are. And so what I would like to do is propose a motion that says the Citizens Review Board urges the Board of Directors to fundamentally reexamine public safety on the trains, including fair evasion, to homelessness, to quality of life and minor offenses, to bias, to use of force, to achieve racial justice in our system. And we we stand ready to support the board in radically reexamining those issues. And I'd like to just make that statement to push the Board of Directors in the direction that I think we've heard from our community and, and the majority of our members. Mr. Mensinger, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I want to thank Uncle Bobby and Wanda Johnson and all the other people that were on this talking. And I would like to tell you, we are hearing you. A couple of issues I think that our board needs to really look at is the homeless issue. We have one person, Armando Sandoval, that is in charge of, one man that's in charge of the San Francisco homeless Bay Area. He is, he has nobody in the Oakland East Bay area. I think we should look at Mr. Sandoval and some people for the mentally challenged people that we could get him more of the police budget because they're talking about a budget. I think that this could be something that we could really look into since we do have problems with homeless people and homeless as far as not being understood and as far as being, you know, shot and mishandled by the police. and as far as being, you know, shot and mishandled by the police. So I think we should really look at Mr. Sandoval's department and see if we could put that up. I would like to thank Wanda Johnson for office, offering training for our officers. And I think we should be open to her proposal and look at that from her funding. I think that we do need more and more training from diversity. I think we need to look at that and I invite anybody that's from District Six that wants to talk with me or email me, I'd be more than happy to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mencinger. So I hope that you will be voting in favor of my motion. Does anybody else want to speak before I ask for a second?
Chair, sorry, I had a hard time hearing some of the, the motion. So I'm hoping that before, before we get too far, that we'll have a chance to repeat the wording on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
If there's a chance for the board directors to comment before the vote is taken, I don't know whether board directors are still here. Sorry, this is Janice, please.
Hi, Janice. We have no problem asking for board directors to, to comment. We do that all the time on, on items and directorions of things, so feel free.
Great. I'll keep my comments for like 20 seconds. Yes, on this today. Really, we really need CRB to be really diligent and really engaged in this and really push on BART board. There are so many things coming before our BART board right now. Obviously with the pandemic, with our decreasing ridership and for the CRB to be really outspoken. I, as one of the nine, would ask you to move forward with this today and to push us to really think about what really keeps our system safe, what keeps our riders, our employees, our system running. So please vote yes on this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And I would invite, I know this issue will be addressed at the next board, a board of directors meeting. So I'd invite people, our public commentators and CRB members who care about it, to attend that meeting for public comment. Here's my motion once more, and then I hope, I hope I have a second. We're, we're nearing a bear quorum. So the citizen review board urges the board of directors to fundamentally reexamine public safety, including BART's approach to fair evasion, homelessness, quality of life and minor offenses, as well as alternative ways to achieve racial justice and fight racism on our system. And we stand ready to support the board in this endeavor.
Hey, Ken Lou, District One, I'll second that motion.
Pete Longmire, District Two, I second that motion.
Can I make a friendly amendment, Chair?
Sure. Make a friendly amendment.
Let's see, it was, and I want to get the wording right and I apologize. I don't have your phrasing in front of me. You listed fair evasion, homelessness, quality of life, and then you went on. Yeah, what did it say?
Bias, use of force and alternative ways to achieve racial justice and fight racism on the system.
Got it. Can I, can we just amend that to say including a review of the discipline schedule?
Yeah.
So if you accept the friendly amendment, then it sounded like you had some seconds.
I do. Do I have a second? Is that you, Mr. Lou?
Yep, Ken Lou, District One, I'll give a second and accept amendments.
Thank you. All right, Mag, let's take a vote.
Okay. The motion is stated with a friendly amendment from Member Armstrong. Member Armstrong?
Yes.
Member Bruno has left the meeting. Member Gomez has left the meeting. Member Longmire?
Yes.
Member Lou?
Yes.
Oh, that's Lou's yes.
Okay. Member Mencinger?
Yes.
Member Perez has left the meeting. Member Riff?
Yes.
Member Darren White has left the meeting. Member William White?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Great. So I would urge, thank you all for coming together for this meeting. Obviously, it's incredibly important. I'll get to you in one second, Erin. And I, and I, I'm glad that we had this important conversation. I regard it as the first of many. I hope the board of directors will take up the mantle of radically rethinking public safety on the trains. I will be there at the next director's meeting to address the board of directors. And Erin Armstrong, what?
Actually, you, you got it. Thank you.
Great. Okay, with that, and we will, we will be reconvening the CRB following the board of directors meeting to talk about our next steps. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Be safe.